Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the way, I've been meaning to say something. You know that mountain cleaner does free cleaning and pressing for flags, right? So I need a little, little TLC.
Yes, certain those have not been cleaned in the decade that I've been here.
Yeah, I was looking at them the other day. Um, all right, well, I'll do a review of tonight's agenda and I'll pause after the different items. So that council has an opportunity if there's any clarifying questions or anything for staff. Um, we will have proposed changes to tonight's agenda. We'll then get into public comment and I, my understanding is nobody has submitted online or in person for public comment.
That's correct.
All right. Uh, we'll then get to the consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our May twentieth meeting, as well as the library advisory board appointment. Under resolutions tonight, we have a couple of public hearings. We have a public hearing for resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven, which is our revised moratorium raising the limit on new wastewater connections, as well as the public hearing resolution twenty twenty four dash fourteen, which is for our master fees and charges annual update. And our new business tonight, we have the Cedar Park project update. And then we have another public hearing for the Cedar Park entry sign variance request. We'll then round off the evening with a report from our city manager and our committee and council reports. A reminder to council that we do have an executive session at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Uh, with that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Maiden.
Present.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Oh, uh, excuse.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hockinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Present, thank you. Um, with that, uh, I'll go to propose changes to tonight's agenda. Hearing ended and that no one submitted for public comment. We'll move ahead to the consent agenda, which has, uh, city council meeting minutes from May twentieth, twenty twenty four, as well as the library advisory board appointment. Um, unless there's any discussion, um, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. And I just wanted to point out that we have a wonderful, that includes a wonderful new, uh, member of the library advisor board named Teresa Pelcher from Hoodland.
Awesome. Thank you to the councillors that served on that committee. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by councillor Walker and a second by councillor Smallwood to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nays. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and move ahead to, uh, resolutions. The first resolution we have is a public hearing. Um, I will open the public hearing for twenty twenty four dash eleven at seven oh three P M. Are there any objections from the hearing body? Any conflicts of interest? Josh, it looks like you're giving us our staff report tonight.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. We're here again to talk about development moratoria. Uh, this time, I think it's pretty good news for everybody involved. Um, so as you know, the city is under a consent decree with EPA and DEQ related to its wastewater treatment system. And up until this point, the city has been under what's called period one in the consent decree, as far as a number of equivalent residential units or ERUs of capacity available for development. Uh, we just changed over to period two, because the city completed its comprehensive capacity evaluation and stress test, and got the results approved by EPA and DEQ. And as a result of that, the city is going to increase the number of ERUs that are available for development from three hundred ERUs to five hundred and seventy ERUs, and has a pathway to get a hundred and ninety additional ERUs, uh, later down the road. So as a result of that, it's, uh, necessary for the city to, in order to make those ERUs available to developers, to repeal the existing moratorium and enact a new moratorium with that new number of five hundred and seventy ERUs. And as part of this process, staff is also recommending that a number of additional changes be made to the moratorium. One of which is to create a program to allow the allocation of those ERUs to specific developments, uh, specifically the developers that had land use approval submitted prior to the initial moratorium and subsequently received that approval, what we call the development pipeline, to allow them to have ERUs allocated to their projects, which is what we understand to be necessary in order for them to be able to have the certainty to get financing and move those, those projects forward. Um, also to limit the usage of any ERUs that are not allocated to those developments to, uh, situations such as failed septic systems and construction of duplexes. We do expect that there will be a number of ERUs that aren't needed to be allocated for those in the pipeline, uh, but it's a small number. The, the, the number, uh, of ERUs remaining in the pipeline and the number of ERUs available to the city are very closely matched. Uh, the proposal also includes a, uh, process by which ERUs that are assigned or allocated through that pro, that program could be reassigned to different uses under certain circumstances. And it allows some additional types of land use applications that don't directly result in demand on the wastewater treatment system such as rezones. That's the high level overview, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, so. I talked to a couple of folks here tonight just about this. And I remember we talked about the extensions and all that. That seemed to be the big, uh, discussion at point last time. Um, for this time, the things that, I, I don't, on your, I'm looking at page three, um, where it has the four different reassignment program criteria. I don't have a problem with three and four at all. What grabbed me though was, um, the criteria for one and two. As, as I understand you to say that one, basically if somebody has a final order to build food carts or something like that, they can now come back and say, you know what, I don't want to do that. I want to do something totally different. But I want, I want, and I'll go through the planning process to do that, but I want to keep my ERU, uh, and apply my ERU that I have for this that I'm not going to do and apply it to something new. Is that what this number one does?
Same number of ERUs, same property, different use. That's right.
Different uses, totally different use. Okay. And then number two would, um, basically if somebody had approval for, for look, for homes over here, they could now say, you know what, that's not pit layout or whatever. I want to do four homes over there. And go through, assume the, you know, some sort of land use process. Um, you know, basically restart a new land use process and then get, keep their ERUs and transfer them to some new property. Is that what two does?
So we actually had this flipped one and two, but yeah, uh, yes, same number of ERUs, same use, different property.
Right. And so what's troubling me is that ERUs obviously become a hot commodity here. And we have folks who are not in the pipeline who really desperately want to be able to develop their property. And we have interest in developing the property we just put thirteen million dollars into on Bell Street. And I feel like when people are not caring, you know, I, I want to make sure that everybody in the pipeline who had a final order to develop whatever it was, gets to do that and gets their ERUs to do that. But for folks that are, you know, all of a sudden changing things completely with either a different piece of land or a different, uh, purpose, I don't really feel like that entitles them to keep the ERU. Uh, i- in fact, I feel like it just, you know, they need to move to the back of the line and get in line with everybody else. The one.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Mm-hmm.
If you don't mind. So if, if I'm building four houses on this property and I decided to build four houses over here, what, what difference does it make? As long as, as long as I'm using my ERU and I'm building?
Well, we know how long it takes to build property out. You know, there's the plan, gotta go through the planning process. There are no neighborhood contact, you know, that can take over here. Then there's the whole development that takes place. And so when we're trying to get the pipeline cleared out.
But it's the same difference.
For me, it's not because again, they're starting from the very beginning of the process with the hundred and twenty day clock, right, Kelly? And all that. And so, you know, it's the whole process starting over again. And so I don't feel like.
They're still building. I guess that's what I'm getting at. They're still building. They're still developing. They're still building.
Why not give those four ERUs to somebody who wants to develop something that's ready to go?
Because they have their stuff in already.
Why did they change it?
And got the ERUs. Oh, I can't speak for why they might do something.
Well, I, I don't, you know, that's what I can't figure out. It's like, you have a final order that, you know, if you, if you haven't gotten your act together to be able to implement the project you've got a final order on, then you, you know, you're, I, I don't know. I just don't.
Your concern is about timing.
Ti- timing is part of it. Yeah.
She wants to grow. Like she wants, she wants to get people in the queue.
No, I understand that. I get that. But if they're building here, they're building there. I just, I just don't understand what the difference is.
Well, the people that want to.
Cause they're still building.
Right. But the people waiting to apply to get ERUs are left out. Whereas these people that seem a bit flaky are not, you know, and, and how do we know they'll be, you know, ready the next time? The other, the last question I had, that was the two points, but, but the thing that concerns me like, um, Kelly, can you clarify, um, on this one list that I've seen over the years, over, over time, it had, um, Cedar Creek Heights, which is the, the views, the, this delete thing. That shows a hundred and thirty-four, uh, ERUs. And that's an eighty-nine or something unit subdivision. So I'm kind of trying to understand how we got a hundred and thirty-four ERUs to them when there's only eighty-nine units.
No, it's a, it's a, it's eighty-nine lots.
Right.
And so with this, with this moratorium, so. Trying to figure out how to say this the best way. So originally they were proposing a hundred and thirty-four dwelling units. So out of the eighty-nine lots, like half of them were going to be duplexes. They've since really taken, they've come back a long ways. They've said that they don't think there's that big of a market for it, for the price point they want to sell these at. Especially since a lot of them will have views and stuff out on the east end of town. Now it's only twelve lots are being proposed with the duplex. So it's going to be like a hundred and one ERUs. This, but this moratorium won't give them a hundred and one ERUs. Because whatever's already been issued, which I believe is around nineteen or twenty houses, those are already, those are already issued. So we'll put those aside. So let's say they have, that means I have eighty-one ERUs left. What this moratorium does is say each lot gets one ERU. And then there is a clause, if they already have like a duplex in our office, like being processed, then that would get one additional ERU. So they have three. So right now they're going to get the sixty-nine ERUs for the sixty-nine lots that don't have permits pulled on them yet. And then they'll get.
Eighty-nine. The original eighty-nine that was approved.
Yeah, but twenty, twenty or twenty-two of those have already been issued.
One year behind us.
Yeah.
Got.
So. Out of the remaining, out of the twelve lots that we know there'll be likely be a duplex on, through this process, they're only going to get three additional ERUs for those. Cause those are the three applications in my office. The other nine that we anticipate coming in, they will only receive ERUs for if there's enough leftover essentially. After we've allocated ERUs to everybody.
Okay.
But yeah, the hundred and thirty-four number, that was a number a while back, but I would disregard that at this point.
Well, here's where I get really confused because when we have final orders, it says, you know, it says what they're going to do. And that final order said eighty, and some of them do say either twenty-four single family homes or forty-eight duplexes in your final order. But in this situation, it just said eighty-nine single family homes. And so what I'm hearing to be said here that really concerns me is that all of a sudden, somebody can come in and build a hundred, you know, it's a hundred and seventy-eight duplexes instead of eighty-nine homes. And that just seems like you've, you've sized all the pipes, you've designed, you know, you've approved, like they gotta have so much dr- dr- one of the issues that was there was driveway width. How wide were the driveways? Did they have an upon-street parking in between when they had those kind of pie-shaped lots and all that? And so there was all sorts of analysis that happened before they were allowed to do what they said they were going to do. And now what I'm hearing is they can do just twice as much as they said they were going to do. And I don't understand that.
But they can. Under household two thousand and one, they can. Practically speaking, they're not, they're not going to, because we've already, we've already processed twenty-something permits. There's, you can drive out there. There's already a bunch of houses going up. They're not duplexes. And then the other thing I will say is this moratorium is putting a limit on that right now.
So they're not going to, but what if they were going to? What would happen?
There'd be nothing we could do to stop it.
Well, so we're just real quick. So then we would just have to allocate the additional ERUs to that project cause it might throw off our count a little bit.
In the future, if you don't have a moratorium with restrictions like this, then they can pull more.
But within, but, but within the moratorium.
The moratorium, there's not enough ERUs for them to be able to do that. It's actually going to be impossible for them to do that, assuming that everybody in the queue.
So, so if we wanted to be able to let somebody new into the pipeline and give those ERUs to them or do it out at Bell Street or whatever, could we do that? Or are we basically just setting aside any extras to the people that are already in the pipeline, which is what I.
The moratorium before you tonight does not allow you to do any development on Bell three to sixty-second unless somebody with ERUs that get the ERU allocation, the pipeline transfers them to a property over there. Then it could be allowed.
How many are we giving then, uh, Cedar Creek?
One per lot.
That's eighty-nine.
Well, no, it's not. It's, it's like sixty-nine because we've, they've already picked up permits. Yeah.
Right. Okay. So they're getting sixty-nine. And so, so what my point is, is we have extra ERUs. And we are, and what I'm hearing is we have a pool that you want to be able to, if they want to do a duplex and they don't have the extra ERU, you want to be able to pull extra ERUs from that pool. Duplex pool is what I think was described as and give it to them. Right?
That's Josh and my feeling on the way to limit our liability. That is correct.
That is the, the only way that we can see to comply with HB two thousand and one.
Uh huh. Okay. Well, here's, here's where I, I get really frustrated because it's when people come in with subdivisions and you're telling me that they could either have two hundred or four hundred homes or one hundred or two hundred homes. We need to assume they're going to be doing the duplexes because it affects pipe size, streets, uh, traffic studies. It affects, uh, how many acres of parkland they owe us, uh, and all those other things. And, and what we tell the neighbors too, you know, because if all of a sudden, you know, they went through a land use process that had single family homes and now it's going to be all duplexes. That's, I think that's something that the public should be able to weigh in on. I get that they're legally allowed to do it, but we need to assume the worst if that's how this rule is going to work. Because we're get, you know, we're getting play, it's kind of bait and switch.
Kathleen, I ki- I kind of disagree. So I, I think, so I, I get the planning for the worst mentality, right? I totally get that. But I think what they're trying to do is find a nuance of, okay, there's planning for the worst, but then there's reality and, and what's probably actually going to happen. So that's what they're trying to do with this bank. You know, is that it's to hold these ERUs to the side in those scenarios. So they have this bank to be able to divvy it out when that happens. But if we just go extreme on this thing and assume that, you know, we're going to, we have to double the ERUs for every lot, we're not, I mean, that's going to significantly limit the amount of projects that we're able to.
I'm not talking about doubling the, in the pipeline lots. I'm talking about in the future when we start assessing subdivisions again.
Oh, okay.
We need to be, you know, because it does affect everything. And, and, and what's front, what's, what I don't understand is why would be, if we gave them eighty-nine units and eighty-nine ERUs or whatever, then I, I don't see why we would be legally liable if all of a sudden they wanted to go with the duplex stuff. Because again, they would have to submit something to plan it, right?
N- no, just a building permit. That's how the, that's how the state statute's been set up.
Don the Carl.
Just point of order. I think we should go to the public hearing and then come back.
Well, yeah, they have definitely other opportunities for discussion. Yeah.
All right. Well, that was just clarification that I needed to know what it meant. Thank you.
Well, let's, Carl, did you, if you wanted to get in and then.
Only that I disagree with the process because I think that if you're going to add a whole bunch of new duplexes on, you're going to be involved in resizing those pipelines. You're going to be, may not be able to deal with the parking, but there's going to be a lot of restraints that, what the laws and the codes will not allow these folks to go willy-nilly from forty-eight to a hundred and whatever it is, that you need to look at the logic of it. I just don't see us ever getting to that point. So to me, proposing to go to the worst case scenario really puts us at risk in terms of what we do with those allocations of ERU. So I really don't feel like that will ever happen. I, I give, I guess it's a possibility theoretically, but away. Has it happened yet? It hasn't happened. If you have come on and there will be some of that as time goes on because the law says to.
All right. Well, I'm going to get into public testimony.
Can I jump in just for a second just to respond to that? I know you want to get to public testimony. Uh, a few, a few things to respond to that. Um, first of all, I think we need to understand the, the premise that this resolution in front of you is not creating the situation you're describing. HB two thousand and one created that situation and this doesn't actually change any of that. Um, the second one is, is there is provision within state law to prevent the development of duplexes in situations where the, uh, infrastructure is inadequate to serve them. So there's, are some protections when you actually get to the point where it's inadequate infrastructure that you can deny the development of duplexes. Uh, that doesn't come up very often. I don't, I think I haven't seen it come up yet, but it could, uh, theoretically. Uh, the final point is this idea of if you assume everything is going to be a duplex and you require everything based on that, you're going to end up violating other provisions of state law that require you to not, uh, discourage the development of housing through unreasonable cost and delay.
Good point. All right, let's get to Pope. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate that. Let's go ahead and get into public testimony. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally placed on the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at ci.sandy.or.us. A staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony for those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand and indicate you'd like to speak. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. Of course, if you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Upon each person, it's your turn to speak. Each participant provided three minutes to testify. Our city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our city council rules do require that each person state their name and address for the record. I will now call on, I, I will now call for any testimony on the proposed resolution.
Mayor, I do see two hands up online. Uh, the first hand I saw is a person, uh, signed in under the name Kendall. Uh, so you should be able to unmute yourself now. Uh, and as the mayor said, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Kendall and I live in the city of Sandy. I just have some questions about this, um, like how many ERUs are pending out, uh, when the moratorium was put in place, how many were set on hold? And are, is there going to be, um, like if those are allocated out already to what you're proposing tonight of the increase, is there going to be any left? And then, um, residents that are on a septic, if it fails currently, are they on moratorium hold until it, they can get an ERU to connect to city if that's necessary? If that's the case, that doesn't really make sense to, um, people's livability. I mean, if they're, they shouldn't be held to the moratorium problem because their septic failed. They still live in the city already. And then isn't there a designation between when a lot is being proposed to be developed or, um, like zoned, isn't there already a designation that states whether it'll, it can, is allowed to be like a, a single family home or a multi, like duplex type home? Or is it just a resident, like a residential, single, like, isn't there already a designation that would say that way so that you would know what, um, septic connections are going to be, uh, potential there already? That's most of my questions.
Thank you so much, Kendall. Really appreciate your public testimony. Um, Josh, Tyler, was there any, or, um, Kelly, was there anything there that you would like to take an opportunity to address before we go?
You want to go first?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to take as many of those as I can remember off the top of my head and Kelly, you can take the rest and let us know if we missed anything. Um, I'll say, uh, one, one of the questions was about whether there are going to be any extra ERUs. Um, we, the current number, correct me if I'm wrong, is, uh, have four hundred and fifty-eight point three ERUs remaining of that five hundred and seventy.
Four fifty-one point two.
Four fifty-one point two. It's changing every day, four fifty-one point two. And the number of areas we are estimating will be needed to meet everything in the pipeline is.
Four forty-seven, seven.
So there's about four ERUs different there. Um, that includes our estimations of the number of duplexes that will be built. So we expect if everything is built out the way that developers have indicated they're going to build it, that there'll be an excess of four, approximately four ERUs, which could be available for those septic situations that were being discussed. Um, the other important point is that there is an application required in order to get ERUs allocated to a development. Some developers may not submit that application. So, uh, and we don't know whether some of these developers may build fewer duplexes than they were intending on or more duplexes than they were intending on. Uh, so six months from now, state law requires you to revisit this moratorium. And at that point, we'll have a better idea of how things shook out with the ERU allocation program, whether there are extra ERUs available at that point. And we intend to have a conversation at that point about if there are extra ERUs available, what do you want to do with those? How do you want to prioritize the use of those? That's the conversation we would have in about six months.
And the one, the one thing I'll add to that is on the septic system question. Uh, in the year and a half, we've had the moratorium, we have not denied any connections for septic systems. I think we've only had like one though. In most cases, the Clackamas County, um, I think it's environmental services department, I think is who it's housed under now, will allow replacement septic tanks and drain fields, especially if you have one acre or more. There are cases when the acreage is less and they'll allow a sand filter system. Uh, we, we do have two or three that I know of right now that we're going back and forth with the county on whether they're going to allow them or whether they will have to hook to our system. Um, but there's no intention on denying their connection to our system if that, if there's no other feasible way to replace the septic system. But we're trying everything in our powers to allow for replacement systems right now to preserve those ERUs.
One other point on that, there was in the consent decree, an exception that allowed for connections for health emergency situations such as septic failures only during period one. Now they're going into period two. That's why it's important that we set some ERUs aside specifically for failed septic.
I think the only other question that didn't get addressed just now with your responses was related to single family zoning versus constructing a duplex.
Right. And that's, as we were discussing earlier, that state law, you, you have to allow, state law, very simply put is the city has to allow a duplex anywhere the city would allow a single family to attach up.
All right. Thank you. Looks like we have another hand up for public testimony.
Yes, Mayor, so this is, uh, Garrett Stevenson. You should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, great. Uh, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Garrett Stevenson. My address is one, two, one, one, Southwest Fifth Avenue Suite, nineteen hundred Portland, Oregon, nine, seven, two, oh, four. Um, appearing tonight on behalf of Roll Tide. Um, I was here, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago to talk about the time extension ordinance that, um, this council wisely passed. And I just wanted to, um, do two things tonight. Number one, uh, express our support for this resolution. And also, uh, based on some of the questions I've heard from some of the council members to give kind of our view on how we got here. This is of course not just a one-sided situation. Um, and what you're seeing in front of you is something that Josh and, uh, Kelly and I have talked about for, uh, the better part of two years now. And as, as I sort of alluded to a couple of weeks ago, when I testified in front of this council, um, one of the things that we really, really need in order to get these projects going from a financing standpoint is a way to assure the hard money lenders that we have enough ERUs to complete the project. And we think that this is exactly what we have always needed so that we can get moving. This allows the city to vouch safe the fact that we can actually complete our project, complete it within a predictable timeframe. And that is going to pay dividends when it comes to actually getting these projects off the ground. Um, as far as the questions about HB two thousand and one and duplexes versus single family, I think in talking with Kelly and Josh, um, it sounds to me like they've got a pretty decent estimate on what the actual demand for ERUs is going to be. I'm pretty confident with the numbers that they have pulled together. And I, I would not encourage the council to look at this as a growth control. In fact, this is the worst kind of growth control that you want to have. This is something that has been imposed on the city from Oregon DEQ. And it is not the right way to go about building cities. However, it is what we have to deal with. And the general thrust of this resolution, at least as I understand it, is to give those that have vested rights to complete their projects, i.e. approvals that are sitting out there and the opportunity to do so. Whether or not some of those homes shift into duplexes or not, or how many duplexes are likely to have, you know, are actually likely to be built. or not, or how many duplexes are likely to have, you know, are actually likely to be built, I don't think that that's the primary question. I think that it's always been at some level a first come, first serve approach. And, and in fact, my understanding of the ordinance really is similar. Where you actually have to get your application in, you have to reserve your ERUs you need to finish the project. And only then do you have a year based on the initial period and then perhaps an extension after that to hold those ERUs so you can build your project. But I think that this is a very sensible way of actually allowing these larger projects to develop. We can now basically say to our lenders, the city has said that this is going to work. We don't have to worry about DEQ any longer and we can start moving dirt. And I, I really do think that this is the right way for the city to go. It's the best idea I've seen since this moratorium was started two years ago. To really facilitate completion of the projects that the city has already approved. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but otherwise I think it's a very well-written ordinance. I think it's got the right idea behind it, and I'd encourage this council to adopt it.
Thank you, Garrett. Is there any other public testimony, either in person, online, or through the telephone?
Mayor, I don't see any other raised hands and not see any hands in the room.
All right, with that, I will call for the staff recap recommendation. Gosh.
For all the reasons that we've discussed, the staff, staff recommends approval of this resolution and we're happy to answer any questions you still have.
Before we get too much into that, why don't we go ahead and close this public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Sir, a second.
Sir.
There's a motion by Counselor Sheldon and a second by Counselor Exner to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed at seven thirty two PM. Discussion or questions?
So you said we have four kind of extra ERUs in the pool. And what happens when like Bornstead Views or one of these other, you know, developments have decided to do more duplexes? They haven't, you know, finalized their plans yet probably, and so when they want, you know, ten or fifteen more, how are we going to handle that? Because somebody's gonna be on the losing it. You know, is that just a first come, first served and they're out of luck?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the, that's the anticipation with the duplex pool.
So we only have four extra ERUs, is that?
Compared to the estimation of the total number of ERUs that developers will need, which includes estimation of what duplexes are going to build. So some, some of that is not set in stone. It's just an estimation of what we think they're going to build.
And that is anticipating that everybody, I hate the word pipeline, but everybody in the pipeline applies for the ERU allocation. We, I, my guess is that will moniker, but I, I can't guarantee that.
I would just like to have for my files, a copy of which subdivisions are getting how many ERUs.
So they will request a number of ERUs when they submit their application. And Kelly will compare that to the criteria in the ordinance or in the resolution. So we don't know the exact number until that happens, but we have estimations of what we think it will likely be.
Do you have a deadline for that?
The S, the estimation is applying that formula, four and a half less than what we have. Yeah, exactly.
September, that's, that's only the cap right now. There's still time for that cap to increase. So there's only four available as of right now. But as the cap, if the cap were to increase, then, then we would have potentially a couple hundred.
We have a pathway to a hundred and ninety ERUs more. And the number could also increase if some developers build fewer duplexes than we're estimating, or as Kelly is alluding to earlier, some of these developments may not move forward at all. And we'll have a better sense of that six months from now when we come back to discuss.
I think I've figured out what Kathleen's concern is. I think this process is a little bit separate from the how you allocate those things. But in the process of allocating it, first come, first served is our city's way of allocating those things out as fast as possible. So that we get as many developments, many houses built as quickly as possible. Now, they can be reassigned, but no one's gonna be reassigning them so that they go past the waiting time and lose them. They're gonna be looking at a way to find a, an alternate method that will get their houses built as quickly as or faster than the original process. So to me, this works very well in terms of finding a way to allocate what we do have and to be able to make sure that those go out as in my way, my thinking, as efficiently and as quick as possible. Which is the whole process here. We're trying to get this thing so that we can use those ERUs and not just hold them back all. If we were trying to figure out the worst case scenario, we'd keep those things back and there would be houses that would not be built. This seems like a pretty good process to get that out.
You ready? Your motion?
Do you, let me, do you have a deadline for when their application is due?
It's, yeah, it's in the resolution. It's September third.
Okay.
Three months from tonight.
And then when, if they decide to develop some other property, move their ERU to another property or whatever, as far as the timelines, extensions and all that, does they just start over? And so they've got, you know, two-year extensions plus the one-year on moratorium? Or do they, are they tied to the, the dates that they had for the original approval?
So I think we're conflating the land use approval extension ordinance with the ERU allocation timeline. So those are two different timelines that they're gonna be facing. Under this resolution that's in front of you this evening, they get, the timeline starts when they get their ERUs allocated. It's one year. And they can get up to two one-year extensions, total of three years. It's not tied to their land use approval timeline. It's not tied to which property they use it on. It's from when it's issued, one year up to two extensions.
And all I had, one other thing to that is that there's only two projects that I know that are looking to do the transfer. It's one of the lots in Salmon Creek Estates that I don't know why we ever plotted it like that. It's like a forty percent slope. And they're looking to move it over to a lot on, or a property on Vista Loop, and Jeff and I talked to the property owners. And the only other one I was aware of was when Mr. Hoffman owned the food cart property, he was looking at doing a medical facility. That property has since transacted. There's a new owner and he's going forward with the food cart potty, he's told me. So I actually only know of one transfer that's gonna likely be applied for at this time at least.
Is that the one that's on the real street corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, we've looked at that several times, the settlement. Nobody wants to buy it out.
I don't have a problem with those kind of examples, but when you make this rule, then, you know, it kind of gets
six months. It's a six-month rule. Guys, ready for a motion?
I am.
I move to adopt, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven.
And I'll second.
All right, there's been a motion for adoption by Counselor Smallwood and a second by Counselor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nays? Motion carries. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Josh and Kelly. Really appreciate it. All right, we're moving ahead in resolutions. We're onto our second public hearing now. I'm opening the public hearing for twenty twenty four dash fourteen at seven thirty eight PM. Any abstentions from the hearing body? Are there any conflicts of interest? All right, Tyler, you got that staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So as a reminder to the council, about six years ago, we started implementing a process where we brought, or bring back annual fee adjustments for much more modest increases that are tied to CPI in lieu of waiting several years and doing much larger fee increases. And so what you have before you tonight is continuing that standard practice of adjusting relevant fees by a factor that is very closely tied to CPI. In this case, we're using three percent for this upcoming year. There's a lot of strike throughs in this document and most of that is either language cleanup or some relocation of where fees lie in our fee schedule that the state was sternly suggesting. I shouldn't say they mandated it, but there was some strong requirements or requests that we modify the layout of our fee schedule. So no significant changes as far as what fees we charge or the basis of those fees, just a different layout and different wording around some of those fees. First and foremost, if you're just going through the document, a couple cleanup items, business licenses, you will likely remember that we have used a spreadsheet for decades. Until about a year ago, we moved forward with an online program. That online program charges us twelve dollars for any sort of business registration. So we're seeking to just recoup the nonprofit registration fee. I think a question that was asked previously about a year ago, when we implemented this online process for business licenses was, what do we use that data for oftentimes? And I think the quickest answer to that is contact information. The, the data that we have in the business license module is super helpful for Kelly and his team in locating business owners, property owners, updated contact information as far as code enforcement violations, transit tax, contact information and things like that. So having that, that source of data is really important and helps us stay on top of being able to get in contact with those business owners. Consolidating, doing some cleanup in maps and copies, but no real changes there. The meat and potatoes of these increases are all falling in the planning and building division. Like I said, it's about a three percent increase across the board. There are a handful of fees that were being proposed to add to the fee schedule. The first is a deed research to determine the legal lot of record. We don't have a lot of these, but we have enough that are disruption to staff time and can cause quite a bit of staff time to be invested in that. So we're looking to just be able to recoup the cost of Kelly and his team providing those services. We added language to specifically call out middle housing land divisions. Kelly could probably speak more concisely on this than I can, but I'll take a quick stab at it. It's not that our current fee schedule doesn't allow to charge for those middle housing land divisions. It's that it was lumped under a different title previously, and so this specifically calls out that middle housing land division. So there's no future questions if we have a fee associated with that. We've got a tree removal fee in lieu here that's an added, a new fee. This is really just in the case where a property owner opts out planting mitigation trees. We can collect funds and then use those funds for planting other trees within city limits. And then
Is that per tree?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we allow them to put mitigation trees. We've had a few property owners that have actually told us, I don't want to do that. Can I just pay something to get out of this? And so that's one of the uses.
And it, you know, it's, it's been helpful to have that pot of funding set aside for other tree replanting requirements when we've had significant tree fall due to a storm or another event. And then a technology fee. So this is probably the perhaps biggest discussion that I could see tonight. The state requires effective January first or twenty twenty five a option for plan reviews to be done electronically. Of course, there's no funding associated with buying the technology to review those plans electronically and for Kelly's staff to do so. Most other agencies that we're familiar with have moved forward to adding a technology fee. The state specifically allows a fee like this. I'm told from some building and planning staff that we have here in Sandy that three percent's actually on the lower end of what they're seeing other agencies charge. But the intent behind this is a three percent fee on all building and planning related charges on a permit. Just to recoup the cost of the technology associated with providing electronic plan review as well as having a dedicated stream of funds for all the other technology needs required in those departments. Just subscriptions for software and and other things like that. Depending on the user, can be anywhere from like ten to twenty thousand dollars just to get the software license. So this is really just helping us recoup our costs there. Just want to point out also that the state does require a forty-five day notice before adopting any fee changes. We've complied with that requirement. We noticed the state back in March, and so we're well within the forty-five day timeline there. And then a couple of other fees, sign fees across the board, a three percent increase, and then a couple or one specific change in the public works fee, three percent being proposed for the small wireless facilities. Really, the intent again is just to help us keep pace with the rising costs of personnel related to doing these services that we offer. Where appropriate, we are trying to recoup a hundred percent of the cost, but we recognize also that that's not feasible in every circumstance and in every in every situation, you know, it might take, I'm gonna make up some numbers, Kelly, so correct me if I'm wrong, an hour of staff time to review one plan, but for a different development and a different site, maybe that takes three hours. So we're never gonna be able to get a specific true actual cost on every single thing we do, but we've tried really hard to review what other agencies are charging, look at what it does take us in staff time to prop, to conduct some of these services, and then get a number that sort of balances true cost versus the time that it takes to provide the service. And I think that that is the recap of everything that's being proposed here this evening.
Thank you.
But happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
I'll go ahead and go to the public testimony and then we'll open for questions. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally placed on the record of this proceeding. Do you do that? Either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at CI dot Sandy dot OR dot US, and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony for those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand and indicate you'd like to speak. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. And if you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll now call on each person when it's your turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. Our city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules to require that each person state your name and address for the record. I'll now call for any testimony on the proposed resolution.
Hey, Mayor, I don't see any hands here in person. Take a look online. Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands. All right, Tyler, would you like to give us the staff recap and recommendation?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So as I indicated, this is, the intent here is to keep pace with inflation in salaries and materials for the services we provide. I also should note that one of the council's goals, councils' goals is related to good governance and city operations and maintaining the financial sustainability of city programs through adequate cost recovery policies and practices. And so this is just in line with that approach that we've been taking for several years now to maintain our charges with the cost of providing the services where appropriate.
All right, thank you, Tyler. With that, is there a motion to close tonight's public hearing?
I'll make the motion with both public hearings.
There's a second.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Counselor Sheldon and a second by Counselor Maiten to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nays? Motion carries. Hearing is closed at seven thirty seven PM. Questions for staff or discussion?
I do, yeah. So a while ago, I asked when we redid these that we look at what the total staff cost was. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, CPI, I'm assumed, what, which CPI are we using?
We use the West Coast BC. I can't give you the exact.
Because when I look at it, the West, the West Region CPI was four point two nine percent.
So the measurement that we use is the West Region Size Class BC for two point five million or less. The most recent month is three point seven, but I think when Kelly and I first started talking about fee increases, which was gosh, probably January.
January.
I, I think it was three point one at that point in time. And so that's where we, we started this process, when we started building the fee notices to go to the state, we use that unit.
And then what's our increase in staff costs, you know, medical insurance? PERS increases, all those other staff costs. I, I just, I just struggle with the three percent truly being reflected with what it costs to do that work. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, so medical insurance costs went up on average between our various plans, about eight percent last year. We don't have next by any of them's PERS numbers yet. But I want, I think those were like in the six percent range. Those are updated every two years. Last year, we did a six percent increase, I believe, on the building and planning fees, if I remember correctly.
Correct, yes.
So we, we were definitely
But CPI was at nine percent, I'm sure.
At the time of the
Final CPI was at nine percent.
Sure. Well, it changes every month. So it just depends on, you know, what month we're using as our basis of measure.
My point is three percent, I don't believe, is keeping up with the true cost of doing business. And I want to make sure that we're recouping our costs to do so. And so I, while I understand these, these increment fees, nickel and dime, so do our costs add up to our staff's benefits and everything like that. So I don't feel that three percent is an accurate reflection. I'd like to see more numbers to see where we need to be, but I want to make sure that we're recouping the costs, and this doesn't seem to do it.
Look, make a comment with that.
Just.
That's if you're done.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I really appreciate what you're talking about, because I know it's been much higher in the past. And I don't know that we're going to get any cheaper as time goes on, but. In in my mind, this is something that maybe I'm I misunderstood it, but this is not so much to support a staff level of some kind, but to reflect what it costs to produce that. Product, whatever it is that the fee is for, was not to produce seven people in the. Planning staff or whatever number there is for.
Whatever that is.
Not that many.
Okay, sure. I'll put that in a moment. Whatever the number is, it is to make sure that we can pay for what it takes to perform that that duty. So if it supports our. Staff, that is great, but if it doesn't support our staff, then um in my mind, we shouldn't try to artificially raise it so that we can support the. Certain number of. Uh, staff in that area. So to me, there's a reason to make sure that we keep increasing it to cover the costs, but not in a way to make sure that we. Support a certain level of staffing. So. You know, I agree with what you're talking about in terms of keeping up with the costs. But I don't want to see us raise it so so large that we're supporting it artificially a certain level of staffing.
Yeah, but I agree with that, but when those staff costs. How much dollars an hour, right? We need to make sure we're recouping that. And and again, I I realize there's no, you can't say that one takes an hour and one takes three hours. I get that. I just don't believe that total staff with the increases, I mean, probably more around six to eight, maybe even nine percent when you look at total benefits package, that three percent gets us. I would be more around a four, five, maybe even six. I would like to, but I would like to see more numbers before I. I agree with that.
So in that regard, uh, Kelly, you're the one that should know, I suppose, that does it cost? What we've got over here on the revised numbers to do that particular project for your staff? Is that reflective of what it costs or is it? Uh, like we seem to head down the path of we're missing the inflation.
So I'll answer that, and I talked to Tyler about this, is. I think the building division fees are pretty accurate for what it costs, the planning or not. And the reason why I say that is because small projects. Sometimes literally take. Days.
Oh, yeah.
And we charge two to three hundred. And that's what all cities, almost all cities do that because a lot of the small projects are. The constituents that live in the city. And a lot of times they don't hire a planner and an engineer. And I wouldn't either if I was them. I'm just saying that's, that's why these projects, there's a lot of handholding. So I would say the higher end projects are the projects that have larger amounts tied to them typically would cover our time. The smaller the project, the type ones, they don't cover our time.
I think the one thing I would add to that, um. And to Kelly's point, you know, the building fees are probably really in line, and that's. The intent there because the building division doesn't get any general revenue, so it needs to be self sufficient. It needs to be able to operate and have a rainy day fund for wind development slows or stops at some point. Um, the planning department also, um. You know, in a perfect world, would operate and be self sufficient, but there's also continued long term and short term planning efforts that. Um, the city needs to do with or without development, you know. We have housing production strategies and housing needs analysis and our housing. Well, we've changed it from.
State mandated.
State mandated things um that you're not going to be able to collect planning fees to offset the staff work and staff time that go into that um. Uh, requirement. And so um it. It's a little bit of a balancing act between how much you charge, how much of a general revenue offset there is.
Can I have one more little thing to that? We also just have inquiries from, and you know this. From realtors, from prospective home buyer.
No.
Not you, not you, but other realtors, um, prospective home buyers, um. People that are just calling to see what kind of community Sandy is and how many permits we've issued and just random inquiries. And we don't charge for any of that. So now if they do like a records request, we do, but a lot of times it's just over the phone. So.
Um, Don, you've been training.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So under planning division charges, the technology fee, that's a three percent. I want to clarify, that's on top of A through whatever um in the planning division, or is it limited to certain planning division fees? What is that three percent tapped on to?
Uh, three percent, as I understand it, at all planning fees.
So, so to the richest point about, yeah, it's more in that. For that particular group, it's, it's more than three percent increase. It's closer to your six. I I like that idea of the technology.
And the building division, if you look at it, that has the technology fee added to it as well.
Did it too as well?
Yeah, it it does.
So it it's actually bigger.
That was actually the state of Oregon Building Division that asked us why we're not charging a technology fee. And we said, oh.
Carl. Couple things, I got Simon, Rich's. Oh, no, I think we need to look at those, how's it no match? Relooking what that might cost. But secondly, so I'm in favor of Richie's thought. Uh, secondly, though, if if we're having to do an affordability plan or a whatever plan, those things ought to support themselves. So county comes down and I know this has happened before. They say we need to get a uh. A cautionary plan of some kind put together and. Get it out of your staff money as well. I think we need to be able to return and say if it's something that the state or the county or whatever requires, you need to pay for it too. So. Taking it out of an account that normally would produce other products. Uh, really shorts us in the long run. I know we got to respond and phone calls from the step, from people and all that should be responded to. But lots of times it's somebody that just sitting at the front desk too that can feel some of those. But anyway. I guess I'm interested in seeing us relook at those numbers.
Maybe we look there. That said, I don't mind going the extra mile for the constituent though.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the, the one off person that's trying to get the remodel done or whatever.
Sure, the realtors need to be responding.
There you go. I think it's important to have this in the books and now.
Yeah.
Chris.
Sorry, I just, I just had a question. So I've heard a couple of people say to relook at the numbers. And I tend to, I I'm on that boat or train too. But my question is more about economic value. Is it easier to, or are we capable of looking at that number? Approval we have today, so we can start to get the economic impact right now and then revisit that number in a shorter distance time, maybe six months or. A year from now instead of having to wait. Um, or do we have to wait and do it once only every twelve months or two years?
As long as we meet the forty five day noticing requirement, well, I guess that's building division specifically. Does that apply to planning division fees as well? I think it's so.
Just building for now.
Depending on if we were to apply this. To the building division fees, which I don't necessarily think is an issue that we're talking about for building. So, no, it would just be uh coming back at another point in time and and um. Providing with additional data and then modifying that fee again. What I will say is. I think it was two, maybe three years ago, we did sort of a comprehensive analysis, for lack of a better description, with. Every city in Clackamas County, plus Troutdale and Fairview. I mean, it was.
Twenty or thirty.
It was a lot of cities. Uh, and that's the last major update we did to the planning fees that got us in line um and significantly. Uh. Altered the footing, I would say, for the planning department. It got us. Sort of up to par with where we needed to be and and that's what we're basing these increases on. Um, I would say that that's an easy. That's a a reasonable expectation that we do over the next six months and build into the budget process for the upcoming biennium. Um, and I think that doing that, you know, similar to what we're doing with salary studies for our staff, kind of every three to four years, so we can incorporate that every other biennium and make sure we're staying. On par with our neighboring communities and what um. Uh, the general cost of services is uh is a, the cycle that we're trying to implement and get on on a rotating schedule.
Thank you.
I just had one question. On the business licenses, can you just tell me like, you know, business license for businesses outside city limits or inside, it's eighty five to a hundred fifteen. What does that? What service does they get for that? Besides a little probably lack of, you know, a little. Certificate or something.
They get a lovely certificate. Um.
Special paper and all.
Yeah, yeah. You want to uh talk about business licenses at all or do you want me to just take this one?
You can take it.
Thank you. Love that. Um, so. What services do they get? Um. It depends, right? Uh, we don't have some concierge, concierge level of. Service that we're going out, you know, annually and um. Uh, meeting with every business owner or um. Uh, shaking their hand, new businesses. That, new businesses that um are not just a renewal, but are uh actual new business. Get a welcome packet from the chamber. Um, we provide them with information as far as who, who the new businesses are, and so they get, you know, all about Sandy. Um, activities.
There.
Right, they're not all.
No, there is one extra thing. So the out, the outside city limits businesses and the home based businesses, they don't get this. But um, B, the businesses within city limits that are not home based, we do a safety check inspection, the building official does. And actually, we've come to find out that a lot of businesses are actually liking it now because their insurance likes that they. Somebody's walked through and checked that the exiting is all correct, the fire extinguishers are correct. So. We used to get a little pushback to that years ago, but now everybody's welcoming because their insurance company wants it anyway. So, thanks, guys.
Yeah, I can make a motion if you.
Yeah, let's do it. Please.
Um.
You there?
I'm sorry, somebody else go.
Number two health residents in twenty twenty four fourteen, a resolution managing the city of Sandy's master fix.
For a second. I, can I, um.
So, I'm sorry.
Can I ask for the revisiting of the budget process? Be it added with that. Suggest that we should, I just. Good, that's fair. I'm good with that, Don?
Um, I'm not sure because isn't this uh, can we have to drop this resolution as is or can we amend it?
Uh, certainly.
You know, restart the forty five day clock.
No, you're not changing the fees.
Yeah.
Kind of back to line with that.
Yeah.
All right, there's a motion by councillor Hodgson and a second by councillor Walker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, against. Motion carries. All right.
Good work, everybody. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, uh, moving ahead, uh, we're gonna move to new business Cedar Park project update. Welcome to your show.
All right, good evening, mayor, councils. Great to be here. This is kind of the exciting time where I get to update you on. The Cedar Park project and um we just happened to have Kurt Lango with Lango Hanson here tonight um because of the sign variance. And so um. Yeah, we're gonna take team it and then, yeah, so. Welcome, Kurt. Thank you for joining us. All right, so tonight I'll be giving an update. Just a quick refresher, the construction for the park started early twenty twenty four. And Goodfellas Brothers Incorporated is the general contractor for the earthwork grading parking lot, pathways and all park amenities. And the action sport element now called Basecamp was designed and is going to be constructed by American Ramp Company. So the um project is currently scheduled to be finished late twenty twenty four, early twenty twenty five. And are you guys looking at the right screen?
No.
We don't have any.
Perhaps not.
Mixed.
Let's see, I just realized. You guys can interrupt me if.
I cleaned my closet out and found my rad racing T shirt.
Did you?
I almost wore it to the meeting, but I'm gonna wear it to a future one.
Okay, let me try it again.
Nice.
It's not a meeting with you, mayor, if I haven't heard.
About the rad.
About rad, yeah.
All right, there we go. Now, can you see the video? Yes.
Picture.
Nobody really wanted to. Files, okay. Um, so I just, we're gonna show you a media presentation and I just wanted to give a shout out to Jojo Hanson really quick about. Um, just thanking him for doing the aerial footage and the drone footage for us. He's in public works and so he's catching some really neat footage that's happening over the park project. And so um. I won't bore you with talking anymore and show you this presentation. So one of the things we added um pictures of the site before we started construction. And it's just a nice reminder of what existed there prior to because it looks so drastically different now. Obviously, the old skate park, one of the first things the contractor did was um pretty large earthwork where they put in a storm detention trench. They mobilized, they started to move earth. And one of the things that was very interesting is that um corrugated pipe you saw in a previous picture is about eight feet, and then they dug two hundred linear feet. And twenty feet down, and then they put this massive piping in the ground for the stormwater detention, and that was some of the first. Work that they did on site. And to show you a scale, we added um, you know, uh excavator here on the top of dirt. And then you can start to see the earthwork really form. And where things are going to lay out, and you can see here, this is part of what um the skate park's going to look like, the um pump track placement. And then I'm gonna pause this. I think there's a video coming up, so we can see that. Um. But here's a video that Joe put together for us, and this is a really good example of if you look, um, I don't have my cursor, but this is where the Cedar Creek Trail or will connect to the park. And then this dark area here is going to be pump track. And then this is scenic along here, and there'll be a jump line that wraps around here. The lighter colored um surfacing is actually the footprint for the skate park, and we did add a lime amendment. Because of the clay soils here in Sandy, so we needed to have a foundation that um was stable for the concrete. And then here, where I mentioned that detention trench, um now it's buried and underground. They have a final um bolt that will go in the ground here at the end of it, so that works coming up. And then as a reference, this is where the old skate park used to sit. And then this is Idelman, which will align with the future entrance of the park project. And then as we, um, the next topic here tonight, we'll be talking about the sign variance, but there is the location right at the top here as people are coming down mine egg. And up mine egg, that'll be the entrance sign. Here's the parking lot. And so you can see as they're starting to lay the gravel for the parking lot, but this gives a really good um aerial illustration of what's been happening on the site. We did receive our pregosa boulder. It's massive, and I guess people um. Saw it all the way here on the interstate because it came in an open bed uh, uh, semi.
What is it?
Yeah, this is going to be a planter box, so they've put that um in and we just flew over the parking lot. And then this is going to be an outlook. So um part of the plaza, you'll come out and you'll look over the whole park. They've put in the bowl. And we're gonna fly to the right here, and this would be where the jump line would go and. Um, I was just told today, June seventeenth, the pump track team will be showing up to start working on the larger pump track portion. Um, so you'll start to see that being cut in and carved, so the pump track will start to come up to life. And then here you're looking west, out to where the soft surface trail will go. And then these piles of dirt are stockpiled right now, and those be, will be redistributed or hauled off as the project continues. And then as reference, now we're heading south towards Sandy Net. And then again, this is where the underground detention pipe, storm detention pipe lays. And then as we swoop here to the east. You can start to see A R C has started to form in the transition street, street portion of the skate park. And every day I'm surprised if you have a chance to go down there, just the progress they make daily is, it's absolutely amazing. And then. Coming around to the right. And approximately in this area, there'll be the placement of um the playground approximately. And then um this will all be landscaped and seeded. And then, of course, we love the boulder, so we had to show it one more time.
And what is that thing?
That's a climbing boulder.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
And um. That is the in-ground slide on that hillside there?
Yes.
That thing you just went by?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
I had a question. Um, in the past, there've been some concern, including myself, about the, I guess it would be the north end of where the pump track area is, but there was a bunch of. We were assuming um old dump material that was starting to um. Some resurface. Yeah, well, it was just decaying and slumping in into the area. And that's fun. Did you find any of that kind of stuff that was of any consequence in that area or that just happened to be a, it's the way the track went to decaying?
Yeah, you know, not for the park project, but when we did build the Cedar Creek Trail down to Sandy River, we did come across some of the, the old remnants of a, of what used to be a dump. So.
Yeah, that's not a problem in terms of constructing on top of it.
No, in fact, um, the American Ramp Company, uh, they're bringing in several feet of uh compacted gravel to, to create a even uh stronger base. So right now, we, we didn't see any, any issues and I, plus what they're going to be doing, it will be very stable.
Sure. All right.
Um. On the um. Slope there, you know, it's hard to see. I'm kind of looking at like that video you had, but you know, on that slope between the. Playground and above the, you know, not the playground, the uh, you know, toilets and stuff like that to the. Skate park, that's kind of planned as a one to four slope.
Yes.
And so I had asked um. Possibility of kind of putting in one or two shorter retaining walls to at least create some flatter ground in there because. You know, one, one going up one foot and over four feet, that's, won't keep my water bottom from falling over. So. What are the opportunities to do that? If you needed some more, a little more money, forty, sixty thousand or something to do to make that happen, is that something that we could um incorporate, do you think?
Or couple of those, you could see. Cheaper than putting in sixty grand.
Uh, most definitely. In fact, we've.
Uh, most definitely, in fact, we've had conversations with Rochelle about doing uh some studies for some tiered seating. Uh, in that area, so that's, that's underway uh right now, so we're hopeful that we can present some ideas.
Cause I think there's gonna be huge crap audiences watching these events, so having, having that place for them to sit where it's. Uh, a little bit flatter.
Yeah, I think having a, a slope that you can lay a blanket on would be nice, but also having a, a drier surface and something that's a little bit easier to sit on as well.
Even just flat ground in there, I mean, it's fairly flat, doesn't have to be completely, but. Doesn't have to be really expensive.
I understood that we were tied on money and so we're thinking about spending some more now.
Well.
Well, we're under in some areas.
Well.
We're under in some.
I asked the question. We're not asking, we're not asking for more.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
Yeah, this is the, part of the work that um Lango Hanson will be doing is a feasibility as far as like at this um stage in the game, what's, what, what's feasible and then the costs associated with that. Um, so at this point in the project, we are on time and on budget, however, um, there's still, you know. Several months, several months of the project left and we do have um. A, a pretty tight contingency that we're monitoring pretty closely, so we're, we're, we're fighting hard for every penny right now. So.
What, I mean.
And as pointed out, uh, saved a ton of money on the demo.
Yeah.
Which, which was from, so we're becoming for that, cause that's all you.
Yeah.
All right, we already moved ahead of the public hearing.
Oh, wait a minute.
That was just a basic check out.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I highly recommend movies for all staff reports.
Yes, great. The movie trailer, too.
Yeah.
Um, good job, yeah, on track.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you so much for the updates, yeah, it looks really good. Uh, all right, let's move ahead to the public hearing. Uh, I'm gonna open the public hearing um at eight twelve P M. Are there any abstentions? Any conflicts of interest? Conflict of interest for a sign variance, but our. Um, okay. Uh, did you have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just gonna, I don't have a slideshow for once, I usually do, but I decided not to tonight. Um, I'll let the applicant speak to it more, um, since it's their proposal. So the public hearing is intended for the city council to consider approval, approval with conditions or denial of the city of Sandy Parks and Recreation Department's request. For a sign variance at Cedar Park. Uh, just as a reference point, we will review this. Sign variance request under section fifteen thirty two. Thirty E, which is for commercial and institutional uses within a residential zone. Uh, because where Cedar Park is located is actually Zon Residential. Um, the sign is a freestanding sign with an eighteen inch high base made of stone. Stay in uh base measures twenty eight feet in length and provides a sitting area along the base. And the letters that sit upon the stone are forty two inches high and made of steel. I wanted to point out that. A sign allowed in a residential district for a um institutional use within a residential zone. Has a maximum size area of thirty two square feet. The sign that the applicant is proposing tonight is eighty eight square feet. So it's approximately fifty six square feet over the maximum allowed sign face area for an institutional use in a residential zone. And then the only other thing I wanted to remind you of is that. We, in the, in the sign code, which will be co, be coming before you for hopefully uh modification later this year. There is a. What I would call a relic or an old, an old reference to a sign variance committee. Uh, that was held for a few years, uh, we disbanded it in two thousand seventeen and since then. Sign variance requests have been coming before council as most of you probably remember. The only criterion that you have is in fifteen thirty two one fifty C. And I'll just read it, it's just two sentences, it says. To approve a sign variance request, the sign review committee, which in this case is the city council. Must find that the requested variance is consistent with the intent of the signage regulations for the zone district. It is requested for and the sign is of a reasonable size. The committee, or in this case, the council, shall balance business needs with community aesthetics. So it's pretty open ended.
Sounds clever to Jeff.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, so with that, um, staff recommends the city council weigh the merits of the sign variance request. Um, here from the applicant, do a hearing and then make a decision.
All right, Rochelle, you're up.
Okay.
The applicant.
We'll share my screen again and please shout at me if I share the wrong screen.
Ten minutes, Jeff will interrupt you.
Okay.
Twenty second warning.
Okay, panic, all right. Um, so yeah, we're here tonight and I'm actually gonna probably hand it over to Kurt because Kurt and his team um took a, a copious amount of time. Um, designing this sign and getting it to match with elements that were on um the park project that had a nod to Sandy's style. And also um was something that was unique and catchy and, and came out as of like an interactive piece of art for the park project, so um. I'm gonna let Kurt expand on that, he um.
Great, if you want to go to the next slide.
Sure.
Um, thank you, thank you very much. Um, I think from the very beginning when we approached the um design of the sign, um, we definitely think. That this park is a signature park uh for the city of Sandy, but also one for the region as well, and so we thought it was fitting that we um think um. Slightly outside the box in terms of the current signage code and uh what we could do. Um, that creates uh more of a dynamic piece that is uh both artistic, um, it's also usable. And then it does what it's supposed to do in, in um letting people know that they've entered um a special place and a special park. Um, we're uh glad that it wasn't a really long name uh that you chose for the park. Uh, Cedar Park seemed to fit in uh just, just right. Um, in terms of how the sign um uh works, it's set approximately ten. Uh, to twelve feet um away from the sidewalk. Um, as uh Kelly mentioned, there is a eighteen inch high uh stone base. Um, that's gonna be a well crafted stone base both along the side, but also on the top that creates a plinth. Uh, for uh seeding, um, um, also a lot of things are kind of Instagram nowadays, so certainly we think this uh will be popular. For kids and, and people of all ages. Um, also, we wanted to do something that would also play with the sun and the light and the shadows. Um, and so each of these letters, um, um, each one is made out of steel, approximately four inches uh thick. Um, about forty two inches high, so as the light hits it, as the shadows hit it, um, kind of plays around with that. Plus, as you are kind of driving by or walking by. Um, just the letters begin to kind of shift in and out uh until you begin to kind of see it uh head on, so. We thought all of those were qualities that really were reminiscent of how active this park is gonna be. Um, particularly with the skate park, the pump track, the play area, it seemed to be uh fitting with what uh we had designed.
Cool.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, let's do the public testimony and get in. Cool. Um, thank you so much for that. We'll move to a public testimony. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. Do that either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at C I dot sandy dot O R dot U S and the staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony to those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand. Uh, to indicate you'd like to speak. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone. Dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will now call on each person when it's your turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. And our city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules require each person to state your name and address for the record. I'm now calling for all testimony on the proposed variance. Okay, Mayor, do you see one raised hand online? Uh, Kendall, you should be able to unmute yourself now. Uh. We do ask that you state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes, thank you.
Hello, I'm Kendall and I live in the city of Sandy. I'm not opposed to the sign, but I do see some entrapment concerns with the letters A and R. This inviting kids, so I would just be concerned of. Those lovely toddlers that are on their own mission, go stick their head in one of those A's or R's and be stuck or hanging. That would be my concern. And then. To Kathleen's question about the slope. When. Lango Hanson came and did those um. Community invite things at the senior center. The slope was talked about several times to keep. The slope there because in the winter months, that's used for people sledding. And that was highly requested that that be kept. So that's just some added thoughts. Thank you.
We need Kendall's phone.
Oh, is Kendall still with us, by her phone name? Kendall, would you be willing to uh state your name and address for the record?
Kendall Pelton, the city of Sandy.
Thank you, Kendall. All right. Hey, Mayor, and I'm not seeing any other raised hands. All right, thank you so much. Um, I will now call for the staff recap and recommendation.
Yeah, on sign variances, I, I try to keep my opinions out of it, so I would just. Say that um just weigh the merits of the application and make a decision.
Right, thank you. Um, do you have a rebuttal to what Kelly said about your sign? I didn't warn you about the rebuttal opportunity, sir.
Um, no.
Cherry is pretty mean about it.
Kurt.
I, 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 I would just like to address the safety uh concern uh brought up by Kendall, um, because we uh deal a lot with entrapping issues. When we design play areas and so there's uh particular codes in terms of openings. Uh, and anything larger than four inch is, is what we often look for in terms of not having entrapment, so. All of these open, uh, all these openings are four inches or, or larger.
Thank you. All right, um, obviously we'll have discussion, but before we do that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Councilor Walker, a second by Councilor Sheldon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed nays. Public hearing is closed to eight twenty two P M. All right, discussion or questions? Yeah, Chris.
Um, first comment, I, I like, I like the sign. Um, I have a couple of concerns about it. The ledge. Of eighteen inches, the gap between the R and the P. And this being a pump track, and I think about juveniles riding bikes, it's another opportunity for them to have a jump. Here and then they can get up on the edge. Um, almost as a ramp and ride along it, and I don't know if that's good or bad, it's just a comment to think about. Uh, my second is more of a question, are, are there any other proposed signs within the park? Because the one name that I was really interested in was Base Camp. And how we advertise that and, and what better place to put a round logo than on the front of the park? With an accent that says Base Camp, but that's just my, my opinion, um. I was wanting to use that one, great.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the comment to that, um, so we do have, now that we have the, the.
Yeah.
That's the applicant.
Wait, I can't, I cannot respond.
Oh. Man, it's. But it's, but it's not, she's also a member of staff as well.
It's not a land.
Answering a.
It's not a land use here, it's not a land use here and there's no, there's no chance of it going to Luba, I, unless Josh has concerns, I have zero concerns.
I just, just.
If it was a land use hearing, I would say something.
Thank you, though.
So yes, I can respond?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, there, there is ideas now that we have the logo for Base Camp to incorporate um some different signs that would like. Focus on that, but it's more of the logo and the emblems that are gonna go on the swag and the different things that will be representing Base Camp within Cedar Park.
Not a, not a sign up, um, but in the park, so.
Yeah, yep, yeah, more of a logo Base Camp, um.
And then any discussion about the security concerns of a ledge? Of that, that eighteen inch riser, bikes and skateboarders being on it?
Um, I think with uh skateboarders, um, the type of stone that we're using is rough and, and both uh on the surface and along the edges, so. And, and also there's grass around most of it, so we're, we're not so concerned about that. Um, and, and we're just hoping that all the bike riders are so enamored with. Of drag that this will be the last thing on their mind, but I, I appreciate the comment.
Counselor, are you talking about like kids olling and then grinding on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, Tom, were you in the queue? Did you have, it's Kathleen.
Um, is this Corten steel?
Uh, no, it's, it's not a Corten uh steel, it's, it's regular steel um, um, that a sign manufacturers um, that does similar work is gonna be constructing it. Though the weathered steel, um. At one time we were thinking about that, but that tends to rust and stain, um, so this is a, a regular steel that we repaint it, yes, yeah, dark color, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, the one, I like it a lot, I, the one thing I would like to see, even if it's just solar lights, I wanna see it lit up. Because I think that, you know, it's great to be able to have this in the evening too, where people know, know where it is.
Yeah.
And so, um, I'd like to see, yeah, lights there, I'd like to see lights at the John'sford sign. And even if we just get some cheapo solar lights, that, that's okay.
Are you, are you smiling about the um, the dark sky?
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, but no, we're just looking, we're just kind of doing lights up to the, you know, it's, it's, we're just lighting something four feet.
I think the dark skies.
Think, yeah. The, the streetlights are, and all that are, are more.
I, I wasn't gonna be in the queue, cause I think Kendall picked up mostly what I was concerned about.
But you, Rochelle. Are Kendall the caller?
Kendall the caller.
Oh, okay.
Worried about kids to.
Oh, oh.
Worried about the holes and all that.
I'm worried about kids jumping off.
You know, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Sorry.
I just thinking that if you got now a large sign out front, is that gonna direct out the rest of the signage? I assume you're gonna have an arrow pointing. To the part, a pump track and a place to go to the bathrooms or whatever else. So that's gonna be kind of a, a key now, you're gonna have this, your signs all kind of complement each other. I'm not so sure I like the idea of the dark skies.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the.
Match each other.
And you're talking about system wide? If, yeah, one of the things that we do have as a, a goal coming up with the next biennium, obviously being a new park and recreation department is a consistent sign. Package throughout our park projects, so if we do have. Future parks that, you know, we're building or wanna name, this could be an example of something that we would play off of. Um, but right now, obviously, we, you know, our signs aren't consistent, so. It's something that we would definitely look into.
This is a one upside. Nothing else will match it.
At this point, yeah, it's unique, just like the park, yeah.
Um, so given that we're just, excuse me, given that we're just looking at the, at potential variance, uh, this seems to me. If there weren't letters on this ledge and there were just a bunch of people walking around, we wouldn't be talking about this as a variance, we'd just be in our project, right? So. Is this consistent with, to me, that this is much bigger than our typical signs? It is definitely a sign, if our business were doing the same thing, we'd call our sign. Uh, but the scale of the park is huge too, so I think relative scale of park, to me, it seems very appropriate and I'm in favor of. I am too. The variance.
One more thing, yeah, uh, two things actually, uh, yeah, this is kind of more of a sculptural sign, um. It, your code talks to commercial and industrial use, which this isn't.
Institutional.
Institutional, but I mean that. This is recreational, so.
Yeah.
Zoning site, single.
Institute, institutional is.
That's the city.
Yeah, government, yeah.
Okay.
It is.
And then my comment to Kendall is that, um, first of all, we have more hillsides on there in the area that are not gonna be diminished and then. But most importantly, this one is gonna be going into the skate park. And so from a safety sta standpoint for sledding, I don't think we want the sledders hitting all the concrete. Ramps and everything that are gonna be in the skate park.
I don't know, right, and you do that, then you hit the half pipe and then.
I mean, I think there's still gonna be plenty of hillside in there for them to sled on, but, yeah. But that's why I do wanna have some seating area in there, so.
All right, are we ready here?
Yeah, please.
Um. Two questions. Uh, one probably is more for me and Kelly, I don't know, have, have we had any local businesses or anybody recently apply for sign variance and get denied?
I think the last three or four sign variances that I'm aware of have all been approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. And then, second of all, do you have a sign like this somewhere in the? Out there?
Are you, are you?
Yeah, yeah, and is there a sign similar someplace?
Uh. Not that we have done, um, there.
That you're aware of?
Uh, there's, uh, well, if we, if you Google, yeah, I think you, there, there's some signs that are similar, but I think part of this um. Was, it, it was so unique that we, we, we love the.
It's cool, I mean, my, I'm just gonna add this, safety, I think of a five year old climbing up on the top of this thing and it's five feet high and. Doing a header off the top. But, and I mean, they could do that in a park, right, with anything, but. That would be my only, it's like, whoa, it's high. So, but it is very cool, so that's all.
Okay, is there a? Okay, is there a? Motion to approve the variance?
May I add one thing, Mayor?
Please.
If you do have concerns about the dark sky and you wanna see it illuminated from the bottom up. You could approve that in the same hearing. That that chapter's outs, I was just thinking of this while you guys were talking, that chapter is outside of Title Seventeen. It's not a land use decision either. It would be new, because we haven't allowed that for other businesses. But I was just gonna let you all know, you could potentially do it at the same hearing here.
What, you don't allow sign? Sign lighting?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not ready to.
We we don't allow upward. We don't allow projecting a sign that shoots our lighting.
Or even into people's.
I I think it would probably be part of a more holistic conversation about what we wanna do. Conversation I'm definitely interested in having, actually, um. But probably not tied to this, thank you for.
I just wanted to mention.
Thank you for that option, appreciate it. Alright, is there a motion? Is there proposed language?
There is not for this one, because we're more sure.
Uh, I'll make a motion, we accept the sign variance. For a second.
I'll make second.
Motion by councillor Sheldon, a second by councillor Walker to move ahead with the Cedar Park sign variance. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays? Motion carries. Very cool, thank you.
Thank you so much, guys, it turned out to be a very cool park. Worthy of a uh rad racing.
I'm staying.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just have a question, but I'll just bring it up during my. Council report.
Yeah.
Oh, not at that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I've got a couple code enforcement updates, I know there's been um. A handful of questions, I figured I should address the group, not specific addresses, but general areas, and we can talk about those. Um, the first, there is a active um code enforcement. Issue, um, your dog park in the Sandy Bluff area. Chris and Kelly and police department are all actively working on that, um. Violations are being issued daily now for some of those compliance issues, and so there.
What?
And there's items that are in the right of way, there are. Structures that are outside of the development code.
Homeowner tenant related.
Homeowner.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, and so there there's been some questions from community members that live in that area, uh, reaching out directly to. Uh, code enforcement, those questions obviously are being answered, um. You know, directly when they're asked, I've been asked a couple of questions from council members, and so. Just wanted to kind of give everyone the information that that's currently being worked on, it's a slow process, but we're utilizing every. Possible opportunity we have right now to get compliance. If you are hearing from any property owners or or residents in that part of town. And ask and and looking for an update, the My Sandy app, they report an issue on that app, they have the opportunity to get updates. As far as what code compliance um remedies are taking place, or how often citations are being issued and things like that, so. Encourage them to download the Sandy, My Sandy app. Report their concern, and then they can be kept updated routinely when Chris is issuing citations or any sort of other um. Status updates there. That are uh tied to that. There was a report, I believe at the last council meeting, from you councillor Sheldon, about some overgrown vegetation vegetation, um. Around a barkwood Van Fleet, that's been reported to code enforcement, letters went out last week. I did not drive in to town that way today, so I don't know if there's been any improvements, but code enforcement is working on that issue. And then down in the Champion Way, Highway Twenty-Six. Industrial eh area, there's quite a few lots that have some pretty high grass and high weeds right now, code enforcement is currently working on that. Letters have been sent, I believe. Twice now, so moving along that front. If they don't clean it up. Um, so. Some of those have been complaint driven, some of these other things have been proactive enforcement measures, but just kinda wanted to give you all an update, but. We see those as well, we're working on them, um, sometimes they're a little slow to. Uh, get resolved, but but code enforcement is is taking care of it as quickly as they can. Um, a reminder that we have the community reception this coming Friday for police chief candidates, that's at nine A M. at the community center. Down there on on Pioneer, um, got three really strong candidates this go around, so we'll do um. A community reception that. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer about four questions, um, that I think will uh be of particular interest to the community. There'll be a small amount of time for uh meet and greet um with those who are in attendance. And then we'll go through the normal interview panel process like we've done in the past. And then an opportunity for those candidates to meet, um, police departments and have to get a tour of that a little later in the day on Friday, so. Instead of a two-day approach, we're doing all all in one day this go around. And we're looking forward to getting that process underway. And then my last update or reminder for you this evening. Is related to the standing at master plan, I believe Greg sent an email to the council late last week about scheduling a time to meet with a consultant that's working on that. Uh, if you haven't already, please um fill out your availability so we can make sure to get all of your. Uh, input and thoughts on um the development of that master plan, um. In person is how those meetings are currently set up for, um. Or is it the eleventh and twelfth?
I think that's right.
Um, if you need a virtual option, though, we can definitely accommodate that as well. Um, you can indicate that on your survey when you complete your availability. Uh, and then we'll take all the results from the key stakeholders, so Sandy Net Advisory Board, um, obviously the council, key staff members. Um, and then a couple, um. Uh, other key individuals in the community that we're uh reaching out to, take all that feedback and of course. Um, have check-ins along the way with you all during that process and. And hopefully finally get an updated master plan for somebody that, um, will be there in several months.
Thank you, appreciate it. Alright, Tom.
Thanks, um, voice has gone out, allergies got me, but uh. Greg Brewster uh sent out something to the Sandy Net Board uh saying they've just completed a major upgrade on their backbone. For uh being able to. Get our local Sandy Net into all the. The internet of the world. Uh, they were able to do that uh. Live without any downtime, which is remarkable, those of us who go back to the early Sandy Net days, that would have been a weekend shutdown. And uh, almost a year-long project for them, so anyway, they did a great job, uh. One of those things you don't even know about, and that's why it's fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's it, huh? Wow. Really have noticed a good um. Jump forward in the. Code enforcement within the city, uh, you didn't mention Jewelberry yet, but uh I looked that out out there the other day. Uh, trying to deal with some clients out there and really appreciate the cleanliness and the reduction and the overgrown stuff and. Sandy Net, and also there's been some garbage cans and some other things, really impressed. Please, some have not been taken care of yet, but I'm trying to be patient. In a few weeks, and maybe I'll talk to you about it, but I am pleased to see how the code enforcement, the new guy at Chris. Doing some good job there. There is some um concern from some folks i- in the fur drive country that are. Worried about some of the dead trees that are happening out there. Uh, he called me out there the other day, he's an old forester, friend of mine, so. Uh, he had said that there was uh. Two or three, and I've actually found six or seven trees, some pretty good size, there's a Douglas fir on scenic that. Uh, is completely dead, and I think it's on the P G E property or very close to it anyway. So you might wanna look into those things, uh. Sometime they're gonna come down, and the better to take them on purpose than to let them come down on their own. What's the progress on the three sixty-second uh crowded emergency use, parking with the. Q and the high school and all that process, are we working on that, and how's that looking?
Yeah, so I can give a brief update and. Chief Yamashita can maybe jump in if there's anything I missed with that, um, we've got some. Uh, drone footage that was done to determine really what the traffic pattern looks like from above and what the impact is at those key pickup and drop-off times. Uh, I made contact with the fire district. Two weeks ago maybe about scheduling a time to um. Get a a fire truck going down um. Bell Street with a car parked next to it to really verify, like, can you get two vehicles? What does that look like? Um, so we haven't scheduled a date yet for that, but it's in the works. Um, I know that Chief.
Make sure it's a truck and not a Prius.
Yes, I can do that.
And it's parked the way the parents park, not up, not. But a foot away from it, because that's where they're at.
Run them down there during school, you know, right after school.
Yeah, we could do a test that way, um. Uh, let's see, I think Chief Yamashita and some key staff members have looked at. How we can better notice and post parking requirements as far as what isn't, isn't allowed in the timeframe that it is allowed in. Recognizing that you're never gonna be able to stop completely, but a halt to people that are gonna pull over and let their kid out, it's just. Managing expectations there and what's allowed and what's not allowed. Stopping for thirty seconds while a kid jumps out, probably much more feasible than stopping for forty minutes before school starts because. Um, that's just. What you're doing currently, so that's some some work still needs to be done, I don't know if there's anything else you wanna add to that.
Yeah, I think the key is gonna be to come up with a plan. That we can use to educate the parents for the next school year. And then start earlier, you know, start this summer and start getting the word out, this is gonna be the expectation moving forward. So that they have plenty of notice before we take any kind of punitive action.
Is there any chance to the school, you guys talking to the school district about opening up the empty, the fire, the fireworks launching area?
Yeah, we did discuss that, um, yeah, we did discuss that, um, maybe rocking that. Just for and and using that, the ingress and egress of that might present other. Problems, so we don't wanna change one problem for another, so.
Wouldn't be too much worse than the airport, though, where you gotta be. I mean, it's the same problem, right? The same problem, so you end up parking way off-site and way.
Yeah, need a cell phone call area, yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, we'll take another look at that too, and and. Superintendent Bear is very open to to using other parts of the campus. Uh, he was gonna check with the fire marshal, you know, the fire lane that runs around behind the back of the wings. And see what that might look like, if that's available, I I don't know if fire marshal will approve that or not, I mean, it does provide an understanding of safety concerns, but. We can limit the amount of time it might be doing. So we're looking at all those options.
I think I would just end it, end it with reiterating what Chief said, which is. There's an interest in the school district to resolve this problem as well, so we're not butting heads, it's just trying to find the best approach as far as. What meets our needs and what still gets students in and out of that area.
Thank you.
Um, the library advisory board is uh working to see if they can't uh convince the Clackamas County to. Pay for the hoodland rent, so that's ongoing. And. The library itself has all sorts of events happening that are online, and I really encourage folks to look into that. Um. I really appreciate Chris's efforts on everything he's done, it's um. Amazing progress, and I'm thrilled with it, I'm. You know, some folks in that neighborhood reached out to me, I've had other folks in other neighborhoods like over here. Where, you know, there's. Places, there's houses, you know, we kinda complain about the medians and stuff like that, but. I mean, there are houses that have. Hoarding amounts of stuff in their yards and old RVs that are broken down and all that, and these neighbors. I think have complained over the years, but these things have been here for years. And we've, we've, and it's not anything, you know, Agatha Christie needs to go and, you know, try to inspect the mystery of what's going on. You can see it when you drive by, and I'm just gonna say, you know, I I lived across from the homicide house, and that was a problem for years. And once the homicide happened, I was like, you know, enough with the carrots, we're going to the sticks, cuz I'm not putting up with this anymore. But it's really helpful, you know, I, we kinda make it so that it's, well, it's a reporting thing, but you know, a lot of the neighbors, they don't. You know, the guys that were across the street from me were, you know, had guns and meth, used meth and all that, and I wasn't really. Thrilled about, you know, making a big deal about it or being, you know, being the one narcotom or anything like that, so I just really. Feel for some of these neighbors that live next to one of these places, because it is. Extremely depressing to kinda have to look out at that, and there's rats, and there's all of these other problems, so. Uh, it's really important, I think, that we have, I'm glad to hear about that My App thing, My Sandy App. Um, I think it's really helpful that, you know, when people do report on that, that they are able to kind of then get a progress progress report, cuz that's a feedback loop. That we've been missing, I really appreciate that, that's a vast improvement, and just, just letting people know so that when, you know, when they do make a complaint or something, that there is. Um, kind of follow-up, so I really appreciate all that, thanks. That's all.
Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, so I have a question about signs, so it was really kinda interesting that we had a sign conversation tonight. Are we planning on signing Base Camp Cedar Park, whichever you want from the highway, and then what does that look like moving forward? I think it's, the idea is that this is kind of a. A tourist deal and that, like, and so of the such, and and it's kind of a unique area with two one-ways and. All of that, but I would like to see some signage out there guiding people. To that.
Yes, that's a great idea, and it's something that um as we move closer towards that, we can definitely put signs up there.
If we're don't doing, and I agree, if we're doing that, we we need John's rude viewpoint, you know, scenic viewpoint. Signs as well.
There is one.
Is there?
Yeah.
Where?
They're right on what, on on Highway Twenty-Six, going right.
It's about this big.
Yeah, well. Maybe we need a sign variance.
I agree, I think it's a, um, it is, I think it's a larger conversation too, system-wide for the parks, because we have some real gems that I think we can get people to. Um, and have a standard or um a a theme that people, when they roll up, they're like, wow, this is a sandy park. Um, so I I agree.
And mining as well, especially during the lights and stuff, if you put mining park guiding people there, it's helpful and.
Yeah.
And all that, so.
Boy, you just, I just have a hard time keeping quiet. If we do that. We do that, there are at least one business I'm aware of that we said no to because it's too much. A sign and other things too, but to direct people to a certain business just outside of. Twenty-six, so what happens with the city, we should be thinking about it for the businesses too.
So twenty-six, I don't know how it works in town, but when I had my restaurant. When I had my restaurant, ODOT put up my sign on the highway. They have a interstate sign rates, in fact, I don't know if they will do it inside of our city. But you pay a fee, they put up the sign on a big blue background, that's where you get. They can have attractions.
Attractions, yeah.
So it's, it's uh, take a look, see if that qualifies, if nothing else, it would, they will definitely do it on both ends of town.
Yeah, sure.
And it's not much money.
Good idea. Yeah, we can look into that, we also have just our normal wayfinding signs, and so we can add, um. Base Camp or Cedar Park to those wayfinding signs, no issue, although I think maybe a lot of people don't know about those wayfinding signs, because they are brown and green and blend into the surrounding area pretty easily, so. We can internally talk a little bit more about. How to. Liven up those signs and make sure that they're not distracting, but digital.
I'll just add one, one other thing that I've kinda proposed before, was those banners that we have, just the low, you know, sandy logo banners. Well, I had put together a proposal to get a grant for, you know, John'sford Viewpoint, and the picture from John'sford Viewpoint, you know. Actual pictures of all these things, so having pictures of the pump track and things like that on those banners would be huge. Uh, picture tells a thousand words, and that would really help, help advertise those things to uh have those folks visit it, so.
Sounds like we need a sign committee.
I'm not volunteering.
Uh, yeah, I had one second, and then I lost it. I'm sorry.
Maybe I'll take an alibi if I can.
Um, I attended the uh Sandy Invitational Chainsaw. Carrying on Saturday, that was so cool, uh, was one of the judges, and it was amazingly hard to judge. Um, they had, I think they doubled their capacity for carvers this year. So they had an amateur division, with some of those amateurs, you wouldn't know where amateurs, and pro divisions were really impressive. So, um, just really neat experience, I think it's really neat for this community to have that. Um, I don't know what his total um number of visitors that he had, that he had people going through there all day, so. Just really, really cool addition, I think, to the community, so super excited for that. Cool, that's a good question.
I'll be even shorter, I don't have any, so.
Fair enough, uh, the the park, the parking lot that we purchased.
Yes.
Is there, one, did we purchase it? I I don't think I I knew that for sure, and then the second piece is. Uh, I know we discussed, um. Again, a plan for that, so it's not just this thing that we forget about, and is staff gonna bring anything forth on that?
Yeah, that's a great question, so we did purchase it, belongs to us, um, we have ordered and I believe received um signage for parking. Um, that just needs to be put up or installed.
I'm.
I saw. Is it, or maybe they're installed already?
I don't wanna say on the record, I'd be wrong, but I think if they're not up, they will be.
They're in our possession, but they're not installed yet, so that, um, overnight parking and camping. They're in our possession if they're not installed yet, so that, um, overnight parking and camping issue, at least it's signed appropriately, so we can enforce that. Uh, but I've not done any research on, um. Charging for parking, like one of the conversations was at this point in time, it's still on the docket of things to investigate. Um, but I just haven't had time to really dive into that yet, but it's still on the list of things to follow up on, I think there's. Some opportunities as far as what we can use that for with park and ride, um. Close proximity to the Centennial Plaza where the buses are, so, and we can kind of. Um, develop a better plan for it long-term, but still emphasis to just right now.
Thank you. Great. Uh, short report for me, yeah, I went to the chainsaw event as well, it was great, walked around, and, uh, thought one of the cooler things that they did was, uh, really created the passport program for people to. Encourage people to go to local restaurants and businesses and shop around town, so. Fun weekend in Sandy, uh, with that, I remember to stick around for our executive session, let's just go right into that. Uh, but with that, let's go ahead and adjourn this council meeting, so everybody.